I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass at April 2nd at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation of the pledge.
Your Lord, thank you for this day. As we look around, my Father, and we see the spring flowers coming up, we're reminded once again that no matter what we have gone through in the past, the winter time that we passed, spring is forward, new life is beginning. We ask, my Father, that you guide us as a City Council to bring the City of Aransas Pass forward, past the storm that we went through, my Father, and we be bigger and better than what we were before. As your guidance upon our City Manager, all of the Department Heads, my Father, to work together along with the Council to make us the city that you intend us to be, is we ask in Jesus's name.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, we go to the board and commission appointments for the Housing Authority of Aransas Pass. And we're gonna appoint, I'm gonna appoint Guri Abrego, Vicky Torres, and Lupe Torres. Now we go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
May I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we go to our City Manager, Mr. Gary Edwards.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have one item for... That is the agreement with fireworks, fireworks production and the agreement for the fireworks display in July 4th, or thereabouts. And you do this agreement every, every year, I believe, and it is the same agreement. In fact, the same price, at least, as last year. Was wondering about the funding, but we have found funding for that. So if the Council agrees, the staff recommendation is to move forward with the agreement. And Mr. Ochoa is here, if you have any questions of Mr. Ochoa.
You always do a great job. There's my comment. You do a great job. On that note, if there's...
Just make them a little longer for free.
Will I make a motion that we consider and act on the 2018 fireworks production?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we go to community enrichment, enrichment, or whatever. Anyway, Sarah.
If I may kick it off, and this is something that has come before the Council before, and you'll recall that the, we presented, or Sarah presented to the Council, the option of turning the senior center back to the Housing Authority and then providing the McSwain Building also to the Housing Authority. But what this does is simply turn the, per your suggestion, this is what you suggested, turn the senior center, which belongs to the Housing Authority, back to the Housing Authority, and keep the McSwain Building, which belongs to the City of Aransas Pass. There will be some mold remediation that has to be done in the McSwain Building, and that is already on the agenda for FEMA. So they are now aware of it, and will move forward with that. If you agree to turn back the, and we'll do that regardless, but if you agree with this particular proposal to turn the senior center back to the, to the Housing Authority, it belongs to them in the first place. And there will be a savings for the city by doing that. Anything to add to that, Sarah?
I don't think so. I shall have questions for me.
What about the activities? Any, I know we talked about different...
We're gonna be in...
My goal is to get it all under one roof and to have all the activities in one building. So our senior, the ones we provide, as well as K-COFF, the ones that they provide. We can share space.
Were we gonna continue to, are we going to do the Meals on Wheels?
Yeah, they will, I, we're just, we've gotta get the building back open, you know, as soon as we can do it.
So we're not using the Civic Center for that right now? There's no Meals on Wheels?
No, because I still don't have carpet. I mean, the Civic Center is still under construction, so they're do, they're still doing the Meals on Wheels, we just don't have a place to do them.
Okay.
They still get them delivered to their house, but, you know, and they can still go somewhere else, but we, we want them to be in a building so that they can have that option.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we terminate the community service agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the Housing Authority.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we go to the finance, and here comes Sandra.
Good evening. I'm gonna be introducing Mark, I'm gonna butcher your last name, so I'm not gonna say it. He's with SAMCO, and he's gonna be covering, he's with our financial advisors, and he's gonna be covering both items on the agenda in reference to the tax note. So it's Mark McClain, McClain. There you go. I knew I was gonna do that.
American Council, it's always good to be here. My name's Mark McClainy with SAMCO Capital Markets. It's particularly good to be here because I wanted to see Allen on one of his last days here. I've worked with him for 20 years, and the man that trained me worked with him going back, probably back when you started.
Thirty more.
Yeah, so it was a real treat to be able to be here and see again one of his last council meetings. Although we're here to talk about a couple items, I wanted to go back a little bit. Your staff has done such a good job of putting in new financial policies that's really, and I think, Vicky, you mentioned, you know, build the city to be better than before. Those steps are being put in already. We've worked a lot with Gary and Sandy over the last three or four months, putting some better policies in, and we see the difference. It's gonna take a year or two for the world to see the difference on just the fiscal side, but the progress is being made. And we're really excited about seeing those steps, because although they're small, they're really good building blocks, because when you go and as you continue to grow, we're gonna be going out to the public market often. And it's just something we've always done, we're always out in the market every two years just about, and people recognize Aransas Pass, and as we make those steps and those improvements, it gets easier and easier to sell the bonds. And so those are the steps, and what's going on now, where our fund balance has dropped dramatically because we've had to spend it, we're able to retain the bond ratings that we worked so hard to get to because of those policies, because of the management, and now we gotta make sure that we build those fund balance policies back. But again, we have the building blocks from years past, but now we're putting them in place, and so you're all's leadership, the staff's leadership is gonna really help fiscally keep the city going where it's supposed to be going. Couple of things we're doing today, and the first is a reimbursement resolution. A reimbursement resolution is really one of the steps, and we've seen this, we've done this here many times, but it allows you to start spending money on projects that you're gonna issue bonds for in the future, or get bond proceeds in the future. It's an IRS, it's really not anything to do with state law, it's just that if we ever would get audited and we started spending money over the next couple of weeks before we get bond proceeds, and the IRS comes in and says, "Why were you using your funds?" And then paying yourself back with tax exempt bonds, the reimbursement resolution allows you to do that. So we would just show the IRS that, and it's just a, a step that we have just to protect the city. If you don't wanna do that, if you don't wanna ever reimburse yourself back with the bond proceeds, you don't have to. But it just protects you in the event the IRS would, would come knocking on our doors. The reimbursement resolution will allow you to spend bond proceeds on the following projects. The Vector Truck, extension of water and sewer lines for, for Motel 6 project, replace failing sewer lines on DeBerry Street, replace, replace old fire hydrants, repair the King Lift Station, repair the Pelican Cove Lift Station, environmental remediation at Conbrown Harbor, and then paving of sections of roadway on Beasley. We're not gonna be doing all of those projects in the next month, but you could start working on them if you approve that and then approve the bond issue that we're gonna do next. Any questions regarding the reimbursement resolution?
Are there any negatives to this?
None. If you don't wanna reimburse yourself, you've authorized the reimbursement resolution and you decide not to, that's okay. It's just an absolute protection in the event that you do. If you start getting invoices, and since we're depleted, we've already depleted our, a lot of our cash reserves, we'll just, we'll allow you to go ahead and pay for that and then reimburse ourselves, because it's only gonna be about four weeks until the funds of the tax notes are in your bank. But we didn't want, if there's project going, we didn't wanna slow it down.
There are some projects going.
And so, you know, an invoice will hit, and instead of waiting for that bond proceeds to close, you can go ahead and just put them in your normal cycle of bills.
So you need a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2018-854 relating to establishing the city's intention to reimburse itself for the prior lawful expenditure of funds relating to construction, constructed various city improvements and the proceeds of taxes and obligations. Do I have to read all of it?
No.
To be issued by the city of authorized purposes, authorizing other matters incident and related thereto and providing an effective date.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did we get a second?
I did.
Mayor, the second item we're gonna talk about is the actual tax note or bonds that we've been moving forward on. This packet that I just put on your desk is the bid packet. We mailed this bid parameters for, on a million four, out to about 15 banks that typically buy this, these type of bonds. We got four bids. I do wanna let you know, we had two or three normal bidders that said, "We're not gonna bid this time." One of them was because they already own some of your bonds, which is always good, but two of them were, said, "We don't know where they stand," because the audit was supposed to be approved March 30th, or by March 30th, and published, and it's not. And so with everything that's been going on with the hurricane, they weren't comfortable not knowing where we are exactly in the finances. I can understand that. They also pointed out that over the last 10 years, we have not met the March 30th deadline since 2008. Our bond ordinance is, when we sell bonds, says, "We will publish our audit within 180 days of the fiscal year." Now, we've always published non-audited numbers, which met the requirement, but as you start building those building blocks, we wanna work with our auditor to make sure that we get a published final and approved by council audit before March 30th. And it's really important, because it's called continuing disclosure, and continuing disclosure just allows the investors that own your bonds to be able to put on the computer and find how Aransas Pass is doing. Now, we've met the bare requirement, because we've gone ahead and filed non-audited numbers, but if you're starting to sell or buy, if you're a bank buying a million five, and you're relying off a 2006 audit, it doesn't give you warm and fuzzy feelings. In a month, the audit would be ready, but the timing is, we say, 180 days after the fiscal year. So we've worked with staff, we've talked to them, it's, and it's just something that we're gonna have to work with our auditor, just make sure they get out here sooner, because they have to do field work and all of that, so that you all have the audit, and goes to your audit committee, and goes, gets approved by council, and it can be published before the, the 180 days after the fiscal year. And it's, that's a requirement for all cities to have bonds outstanding. That being said, we were running numbers at 3%. If you look at these, this force summary, the 3% was probably pretty close, because that's about the average. The far right-hand column, Frost Bank is the best bid at 257, Texas Independent Bank is the second-best bid at 264. If you look at the total difference in interest between the two, you see total adjusted interest, 127,000 versus 131,000. So it's $4,000 difference on a million four. We have split it up, again, working with staff, because some of the projects are gonna be paid by the utility system, and some are gonna be paid by the general fund, so that it flows separately, and the utility system gets credit for its portion, and the general fund gets credit for its portion, and that's all worked out with staff. So our recommendation is to award the bonds to Frost Bank at the 2.57 true interest cost. I'm happy to address any questions, or Sandy, you've gone through these?
Yes.
I don't know if you have any, either of you all have questions or additional comments?
You said that our, our audit was not completed by March 31st. Is it completed at this time?
I received a draft of it this weekend.
No, it's not. The auditor's still gonna be coming in, April 23rd, the week of April 23rd, to still do some, to still do some work, and she's gonna be here that week. She has been coming in. She has told me via email that she will be having some numbers for us by the 30th, so we're looking, anticipating in the meeting in May, hopefully by the first meeting in May, if not until the second, but May is gonna be, probably at this point's gonna be our target time to, to get the audit presented to you.
So are steps being implemented to, for us to meet that deadline, going, starting?
We, we just need to coordinate with her a little bit better. Yes, we turned in our books before the end of the year, last year, and there, there were some conflicts, I think, of coordinating times with her. She wanted the book sooner, so we're gonna try to get her the books before, hopefully October, November. We're gonna, we're gonna work on that, with her.
It has to be, because according to, if it's going to affect us, I mean, it's gotta be priority for us to do that.
It is a big issue for us, and has been for a long period of time now.
Now, we'll say her, the final product, the audit is very well accepted in the market, it's just the timing.
Getting it there, yes, yes.
And so often, we'll be selling bonds in May or June, and it's not an issue. Here, you know, because of the timing of this, you know, the audit, we can't say, "Well, this is where we stand."
Correct. I understand. As long as we're taking the steps to...
Yes.
To ensure that we do meet that deadline.
Do audits have to be done annually, or can you do them like the first six months? Have her working on the first six months, so you're a little bit ahead of the game?
It has to be, it is an annual audit of the whole fiscal year as a whole. So it has, we have until the 31st, the 30th of September, we wrap up our books. Usually takes us maybe about 30 to 40 days to do all the adjusting entries and so forth, make sure we have everything reconciled, and then we start talking to the auditor and say, "Okay, we're getting ready to finish, wrap up our books." We did turn our books in before the Christmas holidays to her. So she, like I said, she has been coming in, it's just she did hire some additional staff at her practice, so there is additional staff there working with her, and she does have the whole week of the 23rd booked already with me, that she is gonna be coming that week to wrap it up.
So now we're awarding the bid to...
Frost Bank.
Frost Bank, so, so, okay. So I guess we, I will make a motion to award, what am I, this?
The ordinance, the ordinance number.
Okay, ordinance number 2018-4212 in the tax note series to Frost Bank.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we go to City Council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Mayor, I left a whole big packet for your signature, and if you get that next day or two, that'd be great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
City Council or staff announcements?
The only announcement, Mr. Mayor and Council, is there is a work session planned for the 10th of April, that would be next week. We can't do it on a Monday, because I believe P and Z is meeting then, so we are proposing that it be done on Tuesday, April 10th, with Council, okay?
At 6 o'clock?
Yes.
Normal?
Anybody else? Okay, now we go to citizen comments. The citizen comments are intended for the matter that is not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the City Council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information recite existing policy... The citizen comments are intended for the matter that is not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Media Act prohibits the City Council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following: Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for the subsequent meeting.
Get all three of us at once. My name is Mary Wells, and I'm a member of the Lions Club. Currently, I'm the secretary. I will be going out of office in July, on July 30th, and assuming the office of President on July 31st, or July 1st. We are here this evening giving you information in regards to our upcoming white cane days. This is our annual fundraiser for the Texas Eye Bank, and this is done by the Aransas Pass Lions Club, as well as all of the Lions Clubs in the state of Texas. We are asking for donations from each member of the City Council, not from the city itself. We will be having members of our Lions Club at Walmart at both the doors this coming Saturday with information and collecting donations. They can be made by check or cash, we accept both. Also, at my store, Granny's Jewelry Box and Crafty Stuff at 539 South Commercial Street, I will have a donation box. All you have to do is come in, just drop whatever you want in it. I also accept eyeglass donations there all times. In 1925, Helen Keller asked the Lions to be her champions, her knights, to help raise funds, to help with vision awareness, to help provide canes for the unsighted, and also now, we are also raising funds for corneal implants and other research for the blind. So this is really an important thing. Currently, our Lions Club has obtained our PediaVision, which our current president came before you last year and talked to you about the PediaVision machine. We have received ours. And we do our eye exams for the children in the school systems and in the daycare systems for both Aransas Pass and our neighboring communities. It's a really interesting machine. We can do the vision checks as young as six months old. Yes, I've done them personally, six months old. I had a little girl that I did just a couple of weeks ago that was just a tiny baby, and, you know, it was kinda fascinating to do it. I think Ron did one that was a baby a couple of weeks ago, too. And then we can do them up until the time, you know, they're ready to go in the grave, as long as they're drawing breath. It's about the size of a little camera, and as long as, you know, your eyes are dilate and the room's dark enough, we can do them. So that's a big move for our area. Once we get our schools back going again from, you know, get our students back, it's a real hit from the hurricane, but that was all we wanted to talk to you about. So any donations that we can get from you guys, we really appreciate it.
One of the things that I would like to mention is, it wasn't too long ago, the Lions Club opened their hearts to the City of Aransas Pass and took the community and staff into our home, and that's something that we're asking the city to open your hearts. And 100% of what we gather with this goes directly to the Eye Bank. There's not a penny of it that is kept or maintained by the Aransas Pass Lions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Howard Gillespie County Commissioner, 801 Sam Piper, Engles, Texas. I just wanted to let you all know that we approved the interlocal agreement for the street work today. Judge Chivari signed it, you'll get the copy back, so let me know whatever you wanna do. Okay, thank you.
I always let Eric go first.
Jack Sandy County Commissioner, Aransas County North End, Aransas Pass. I just wanted to call in a couple of observations, just real quick. Town's looking good, it really is. Y'all really got on the job and cleaned it up. I've been all over the town doing different things, and it's really looking good, it really is. Y'all should be proud of yourselves. And the second thing is, I wanted to publicly thank the City Council and our new City Manager, but primarily the Building and Inspection Department. As y'all know, I have an electrical company, and it's always been a pleasure to do business with Aransas County, I mean, with Aransas Pass, not necessarily Aransas County, but with Aransas Pass. But I'm gonna tell you, we don't even go there. Your Building and Inspection Department has really stepped up and become professional. They really have. I've loved all the building inspectors before, and, you know, I'm not doing anything other than telling you that it is a real good example of how y'all have taken a difficult situation with the hurricane and have really made some serious improvements, some serious improvements. You've got good leadership out there, you've got good inspectors, you know, they don't always agree with me, so, you know, they're wrong sometimes, but, but the bottom line is, Aransas Pass is on the move, and I'm real proud to have 900 of your citizens in my county, and Howard is blessed with having the rest of y'all. But, yes, you are. Oh, hush. But anyway, and also, the last thing I wanted to do, you know, I get up here and I can talk all day, but the last thing I wanted to do is, I wanted to congratulate your chief police for taking a stand. It's not a popular stand with guns issued or anything, but it's doggone sure the right stand, and if I can ever help you with that, chief, with that or anything else, let you know. Thank you, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Jack, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to executive session. We'll be back.